All right, man, ready for vacation?
Excellent. So why are you taking a vacation, a member of the government team?
Well, first of all, I gotta get away from people because people are chasing me. I gotta get away.
I don't know which other.
And then it's gonna grow whether I'm sure or not.
Regardless.
I mean, you know, the corn is growing. It's playing. It's in the ground. It's gonna grow. I can stand here and look at it.
Well, you got to put an oxygen in it.
Well, that's already there. The haze gotta be in, but we gotta wait on Mother Nature. Everybody knows.
We need attention to the bench and attention to the barn.
Let us pray, please. Dear Lord, thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. May we all be open-minded and appreciative and respectful to each other's thoughts, opinions, and feelings, and open-hearted to more of you. Bless our meeting, Lord, and grant each of us wisdom in our decision-making. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Benell.
Present.
Gons. Kurt Patrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Here.
Marion.
Here.
Neil.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Trig.
Here.
Witcher.
Here.
Later. Check your mind.
Check my mind.
There you go.
Is that better? All right. Uh, so what we want to do is, we want to know if you looked over what the proposed agenda was, and then I will entertain a motion that we adopt this agenda with which to preside by tonight.
Motion.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Kurt Patrick, is there a second?
Sure.
Okay. First, a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of proceeding indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. So we'll move right forward into tonight's agenda for this May the thirteenth. And the item on the agenda first is the approval of the minutes. This is not May the thirteenth, but the approval of the minutes from back on May the thirteenth.
Motion, Benell.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, from Councilman Marion. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And we also have some minutes of a special called meeting that was held on Tuesday, June the fourth. You've had those in your packet to look over. We need to approve them as part of the record right here. I'll entertain a motion to do that. Okay, from Councilman Neil. Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes of that meeting? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minutes are now entered into the record. Next, we need to consider some old business. We have second reading of an ordinance that Rich is going to talk about for us.
That whereas when the purebred acres number four subdivision was developed and platted, a street designated as Branham Avenue was dedicated as a public way. But the public way as platted in nineteen ninety was never used, and instead the existing Branham Avenue has been dormant. Whereas pursuant to KRS eighty-two four oh five, all of the property owners in or abutting the unused public way designated as Branham Avenue located off Shorthorn Street, the plat of which is attached as Exhibit A, have consented to the closing of the public way, subject to the provision that the property contained within that public way revert back to the owners of the property in or abutting the public way. Whereas an affidavit pursuant to law has been signed by all of the property owners in or abutting this public way proposed to be closed, and those consents are attached as Exhibit B. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section one, pursuant to KRS eighty-two four oh five sub two, the following findings of fact are made. The property owners in or abutting the public way proposed to be closed are Karen Wilson, Maud Eisenberg, and Thesia Joan Edwards. B, written notice of the proposed closing has been given to all of the pro- aforesaid property owners. And C, all of the aforesaid property owners have given their consent to the closing ordained herein, and those consents are attached as Exhibit B. Section two, the aforesaid public way designated as Branham Avenue located off Shorthorn Street in Glasgow is hereby ordered closed, subject to the following provisions. Ownership of the property contained within the portion of public way being closed will revert back to the aforesaid property owners according to the law of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Rich, every time you said Shorthorn, I should have Longhorn.
Okay. Oh, it's Long. Did I say Shorthorn? I'm sorry. Long- Longhorn Street. And it is written Longhorn. I don't know why I had that on the brain. But it's, it is, it's Longhorn Street.
I had the wrong call.
No, I'm sorry. Bran- Branham Avenue located off Longhorn Street.
We need some more analysis into that.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Is everybody, uh, clear on the actual, what the name of the street is? Okay, so with that, yeah, that's right, Longhorn it is. So with that being said, this is the second reading. I'll entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion, Lowry.
Okay. Is there a second?
Uh-huh.
Okay, from Councilman Witcher. Okay, it's a second reading. We need a, we need a, the roll call by the clerk.
Marion.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Trig.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Benell.
Yes.
Kurt Patrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. The ordinance is approved. We have some new business to begin with tonight, Rich.
This is an, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three uh, in twenty, uh, twenty through June thirty twenty twenty-four. Be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow that its annual budget for fiscal year July one twenty twenty-three through June thirty twenty twenty-four is amended as follows. Section one, there's hereby received the sum of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from an AFG grant to be transferred into the Fire Department Federal Monies account for a mobile cascade trailer. Section two, there's hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to be transferred into the Fire Department Technical Equipment Account for the purchase of a mobile cascade trailer. Section three, there's hereby received the sum of sixty-three thousand dollars into the General Fund Street Department Sell of Property account for the sale of equipment. Section four, there's hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars to be transferred to the Plaza Fund into the Plaza Professional and Technical account for professional services. Section five, there's hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of twenty-three hundred dollars to be transferred to the Animal Control Department Overtime account for overtime expenses. Section six, there's hereby received the sum of one hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and twenty-three cents into the General Fund Opioid Settlement account for the opioid settlement case. Section seven, there's hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of thirteen hundred dollars to be transferred to the Transit Department Work Compensation Medical Expense account for work comp injury expenses. Section eight, there's hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of ninety-four hundred dollars to be transferred into the Clef Fund for the Fire Clef Transfer account for incentive expenses for Clef. Section nine, there's hereby received the sum of four hundred twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars into the General Fund Street Department Federal Monies account from TAP Grant Number Two. Section ten, there's hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund four hundred and ten thousand dollars to be transferred to the Street Department Contractual Improvements TAP Grant account for TAP Grant improvements. Section eleven, there's hereby received the sum of one hundred four thousand dollars into the General Fund Entertainment Glasgow Sponsorships account from those sponsorships. Section twelve, there's hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund one hundred and one thousand dollars to be transferred to the Entertainment Glasgow Contractual Services account for concert and entertainment service expenses. Section thirteen, there's hereby appropriated from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund the sum of twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars to be transferred into the landfill department rent and storage account for equipment rental. Section fourteen, there's hereby appropriated from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund eighty-five thousand dollars to be transferred to the landfill maintenance and repairs account for repairs to the articulating truck. Section fifteen, there's hereby appropriated from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund one hundred ninety-four thousand dollars to be transferred to the landfill contractual improvement account for repairs and improvements to the Leachate Pump Station. Section sixteen, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right. You have heard the first reading of this ordinance called a budget amendment, and I will first of all entertain a motion that we approve this ordinance.
Motion, Benell.
Okay, and a sec.
Second, Norris.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Let's open up the floor now for any discussion on voting, uh, this, on voting on this ordinance. Is there any discussion? If there is none, I will call for a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Now we move on to, this, this is kind of wrapping up, uh, the, uh, the end of this past fiscal year. We're fixing to jump into the new fiscal year as we have the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the city budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Rich, if you want to get started on that?
Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council. And whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section one, the, that the annual budget for fiscal year July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirty twenty twenty-five is hereby adopted as follows. And I'll be reading, try to summarize as best I can from each of the, uh, line items. You have the administrative, uh, area. The estimated revenues are twenty million one hundred forty-five thousand three hundred dollars. There was no carryover from the prior year. The estimated expenses for the upcoming year, five million two hundred forty-three thousand thirty dollars. In the legislative section, no carryover from, uh, prior year. Estimated revenues, zero. Estimated expenses, one hundred seventy thousand five hundred fifty dollars. In the police department, uh, no estimated carryovers. The estimated revenue for the upcoming fiscal year, two hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars. Estimated expenses, five million four hundred forty-seven thousand four hundred forty-four dollars. Animal control, no carryover from prior year. Estimated revenues for the new year, one hundred forty-six thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars, with estimated expenses in the new year of three hundred nine thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars. Fire department, no carryover from prior year. Estimated revenue for the new budget year, two hundred eighty-three thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars. Estimated expenses for the new year, four million three hundred thirty thousand five hundred forty-five dollars. The fire substation, no carryover from prior year. No estimated revenue for the new year, but estimated expenses for the new fiscal year of a hundred and five thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. Communications, no carryover from prior year. Estimated revenue for the new year of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Estimated expenses for the new fiscal year of one million three hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. In the street department, no carryover from prior year. Estimated revenue for the new year of thirteen thousand dollars. Estimated expenses for the new fiscal year, two million six hundred twenty-one dollars, two million six hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. In the building inspector, uh, area, no carryover from prior year. Estimated revenues for the new fiscal year of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Estimated expenses for the new year, three hundred twenty-four thousand and one dollar. Transit, no carryover from prior year. Estimated revenue for the new fiscal year of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Estimated expenses for the new year of two hundred twenty-two thousand forty-six dollars. Recreation, again, no carryover from prior year. Estimated revenue for the new year, three hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. Estimated expenses for the new year, four million two hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and five dollars. The swimming pool project, uh, no carryover, no estimated revenue, but the expense estimated for the new year being five million eight hundred four thousand dollars. Entertain Glasgow, no carryover from prior year. Estimated revenue of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Estimated new expenses of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. The, uh, South Central Kentucky Cultural Center, uh, no estimated carryover, no estimated revenue for the new year, but estimated expenses for the new fiscal year of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. Stormwater, uh, no estimated carryover or revenue for the new year. Estimated expenses, however, for the new year of two hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars. The general fund carryover, uh, for the prior year, thirteen million one hundred thirty-five thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and forty-one cents. You have estimated revenues for the new year totaling twenty-two million twenty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars, and total estimated, uh, expenses in the general fund of thirty million six hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars, and an estimated carryover after our new fiscal year of forty, of four million five hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-one cents. The Plaza Fund, uh, carryover from prior year of nineteen thousand six hundred eighty dollars and sixty-one cents. Estimated revenue for new year, five hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Estimated expenses, four hundred forty-two thousand eighty-eight dollars. Uh, estimated fund balance at the end of this upcoming fiscal year then would be one hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Municipal Road Aid, uh, carryover of two hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars. Estimated revenue for new fiscal year, two hundred eighty thousand dollars. Estimated expenses for the new year, two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, with an estimated fund balance after, uh, the upcoming fiscal year of two hundred eighty-three thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars. The Clef Fund for the Police and Fire with a carryover from prior year of eighty-four hundred and twelve dollars. Estimated revenues for the new fiscal year of five hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars. Estimated expenses for the new year, five hundred twelve thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars, with an estimated fund balance at the end of our new fiscal year at twelve thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars. The, uh, GEDL Fund has a carryover from prior year of one million two hundred forty thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars. Estimated revenues for the new fiscal year of six hundred dollars. Es- zero expenses for the estimated, uh, expenses for the new fiscal year. So an estimated fund balance projected of one million two hundred forty-one thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars. The municipal cemetery, carryover from prior year of thirty-six thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and ten cents. Estimated revenues for the new fiscal year of five hundred seventy thousand dollars. Estimated expenses for the new year, five hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars, leaving an estimated fund balance at the end of the upcoming year of seventy-one thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars and ten cents. The perpetual upkeep fund, five hundred and two thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Estimated carryover, estimated revenues for the new year of fourteen thousand. No estimated expenses, leaving an estimated fund balance of five hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars seventy-eight cents. Sanitation and landfill fund, an estimated carryover from prior year of eight million seven hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. Estimated revenues projected for the new fiscal year, right at six million dollars, five million nine ninety-nine nine hundred. Estimated expenses, five million nine hundred forty-two thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars, leaving an estimated fund balance of eight million eight hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-seven cents. The pos- closure, post-closure fund, carryover from prior year, six million two hundred thirty thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars. Estimated revenues for the new fiscal year of eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars. No estimated expenses for the new year, leaving an estimated fund balance after the new fiscal year of six million two hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars. So, uh, totals for all of those, uh, accounts, the estimated year-end balances, a carryover from prior year of thirty million two hundred forty thousand seventy-six dollars thirty-seven cents. Estimated revenues for the city in the new fiscal year of thirty million sixteen thousand thirty-six dollars. Estimated expenses for the new year, thirty-eight million three hundred forty-one thousand sixty-six dollars, with an estimated fund balance, uh, total fund balance at the end of the fiscal year of twenty-one million nine hundred fifteen thousand forty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. This ordinance shall take effect as of July one twenty twenty-four, uh, after publication according to law.
Thank you, Rich. Good job of reading, uh, those numbers. Uh, and, uh, I saw you got your water bottle there. You might want to take a little shot as, uh, first thing to get this up on the floor to talk about it, I need a motion that we approve the first reading of this budget ordinance.
Motion, Benell.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Now we can open up the floor for, uh, discussion. I think I would like to call on, uh, Councilman Benell first. He is the chairman of the city's finance committee. That committee has picked through all of this budget, and I would like first of all just to hear your comments on it, uh, from the various meetings that the budget committee has had on it.
Thank you, Mayor Royce. At our most recent meeting, May twenty-third, when the finance committee met with the finance department, with Stephanie and Matty, and, uh, members of the committee and the mayor, uh, went through the budget, feel like this is a reali- realistic budget. It's, moves us forward in lots of different areas. It's a proactive budget. Uh, the department heads came together and put together a budget that they could work with, and, uh, opportunities for us to invest in several areas. I think when we look at this budget, uh, it is an aggressive budget. Uh, as I do mention, it is a realistic budget. It does have a deficit spending in it, so we have more expenditures versus revenues. Uh, but we're very fortunate to have, in our general fund, we have carryovers from prior year, so that's been a great benefit to us. Uh, but now as we look into the future, we have some expenditures that we need to, to make to take care of some services. In this budget, uh, you'll see that most of the revenue is flat. Uh, our occupational license fee, which is a large revenue producer for us, that's flat. The net profit fee is flat. It means there's not much increase that we're looking into this. Uh, but we have expenditures up about thirty-one percent. Now those expenditures are across all departments within the city. Uh, we feel like the city services that are proposed in this budget are good. We feel like the expenditures that are going to be made for investments long-term are very, going to be very beneficial to the city as we move forward. I think the emphasis that all of us in the legislative body have got to look at with the mayor's proposal for this budget and, and the staff, is that, uh, we've been, uh, blessed over the years to generate some additional revenues over expenditures. And now's the time to use those additional revenues in certain critical areas. And the mayor has highlighted those areas. Uh, we, as the finance committee, support those areas. In this budget, there's a large expenditure for the Aquatic Center that's going into American Legion. Also, in American Legion, there are improvements to that park as well, in addition to the Aquatic Center. We have Richardson Field that we like, we'll be spending additional monies in. Uh, we have expenditures, uh, with other departments, the police department, the fire department. We have payroll increases in the budget. We have equipment in the budget. We have landfill expenditures for equipment. We have public work expenditures for equipment. Uh, so across every area of the city, it's going to be impacted by this budget. And it's, like I say, it's a realistic budget. It's an aggressive budget. Yeah, we don't like to have more, uh, expenditures than revenue. I think now's the time to do this. And years ago, when we passed the increase in the occupational license fee, we, we received the sources to do activities like this. That's why that was so critical years ago to have the twenty-five basis point increase in the occupational license fee. And that's why, as you look as the city attorney has read through this ordinance, and you see where we're starting with, with the carryover, and where we're going to end up with the carryover. And so we're spending money that we have not spent in the past. We're not taking on any debt. We're using our own funds to do this, so we're funding this internally, uh, which is a wise, wise move in my opinion, uh, so that we can move the city forward. And so, uh, to these areas, I think they're, they're very good areas. Uh, again, I wanted to thank the, the finance department for working this out, and for all the department heads that are here tonight, and others that aren't here that have worked on this, to make this reality. And Mayor, you, you have some very, um, aggressive items that you're working on, on this, to move us forward. And I think as a legislative body, we should support the mayor and this administration, uh, to accept, uh, this proposed budget.
Thank you for your, for your comments, and I will chide in here in a second about some of the things you said, but I really want everybody that would like to say something about this proposed budget to please use this time to speak. If you've got something that, uh, you're curious about, that you're, as you look through this budget, one thing you, uh, didn't bring up, Terry, talking about some of the things we're able to do, I don't know how many times in a city budget we built a whole bridge. But we're building a whole bridge because our landfill is going to have to have it. And if you can look at the budget and see one of our better income-producing parts of the city is the landfill. The number of people that use the landfill, but we're going to have to be able to move dirt around across those two creeks down there, and we have to build that bridge. And my goodness, to have, to have the money, uh, in the bank to build that bridge is going to let us keep the landfill even more and more viable. That's one of the many things that just tickles me to death that we can, are going to be able to do that. And Stephanie and Matty are, they are, I just, I've been thinking about the best way to describe the effort that they put into doing this. It's not exactly slave drivers. It's not exactly being pesky neighbors, but they are in a sweet way, good at reminding us that this is a very important part of what we do. I don't care what your job is Monday through Friday. Your job is also to make sure that the city is able to provide the services and to pay for the services. And I, and I have seen such a, um, growth in the interaction between the finance department and the different department heads who are making these decisions. department heads who are making these decisions, because we all know that we can sit up here and feel good about us being able to do what we're asked to do and to pay for it. So, I really want to thank you all for, and if anybody was ever short with you or whatever, it had to do with something other than budget. I am sure they're looking around at each other back there. They've got some names to assign to that. So, anyway, thank you, Terry, for that. And so, we have open discussion, we have a motion and a second, and I don't want to cut discussion short. But if there is no further discussion, then I would call a question.
I think it's very motivational to see a lot of small things happen, and then big things happen, too, and I think the citizens see that, and it's evident.
Yes, yes, thank you, sir.
I have a question. I don't know who needs to answer, mayor, Stephanie, or April. You all can pick. When it comes to expenses, estimated expenses for twenty-five, how does grants take part in that? Because I know during the year, we apply for grants for, does that, does that play a part in the expenses or not? Yes?
You've got a grant in there, and you've got the expense in there for that grant.
Yeah.
So, that's already allocated?
Yes, if the grant's in there. Now, not all grants are in here, because we don't know if we're going to get some of them or not.
That's where I was going, so, so if, taking the expense side, and if there was an event, a grant available, then that would take it over to possibly a carryover, correct?
It just depends on what kind of grant it is, see if the grants are already being included, or if you have to do a vision.
Gotcha.
Some grants are earmarked for certain purposes, and so you have to look at them on an individual basis. I will say that.
Thank you, Stephanie.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we have a motion and a second to pass the first reading of this ordinance adopting the City of Glasgow's annual budget. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and the first reading of the budget does pass. There's a lot of work to get to this point, for sure, by a whole lot of people. It's a very, it's a very proud moment for a lot of people within the city. So, I'll hush, and it'll be your time to read again, okay?
Next item is an ordinance accepting Hudson Lane as a city street. That whereas Hudson Lane is located approximately two hundred and ninety feet east of the Lexington Drive and Robert Bishop Road intersection, and connects the Robert Bishop Road and Harold Bishop Road in the City of Glasgow, as shown on the drawing attached as Exhibit A. Whereas a geotechnical report by American Engineers has been repaired, prepared, and delivered to the superintendent of Public Works, stating that based upon core drilling and compaction tests, Hudson Lane meets the roadway development standards for the construction of streets in Glasgow. Excuse me. And whereas the superintendent of Public Works has inspected and approved Hudson Lane for inclusion as a city street in Glasgow, and has sent his recommendations to the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission, who on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, unanimously approved Hudson Lane for inclusion as a city street. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section one, Hudson Lane, which is approximately seven hundred sixty feet in length and fifty feet in width, is hereby accepted and approved as a city street and part of its maintenance system. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard first reading of this ordinance, accepting Hudson Lane. I entertain a motion that we approve this ordinance.
Motion.
That's from Councilman Kirkpatrick. Second from Councilman Neal. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance is passed. Rich?
The next item, mayor, is an ordinance prohibiting all cannabis business operations within the city limits of Glasgow. That whereas in twenty twenty-three, the Kentucky General Assembly enacted legislation that establishes Kentucky's medical program with regard to marijuana, and the legislation is codified in Kentucky Revised Statutes, KRS Chapter two eighteen B. And whereas this new legislation provides at KRS two eighteen B point one three zero, that Kentucky cities may elect and to adopt an ordinance prohibiting all cannabis business operations within its territory. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows. Section number one, all cannabis business operations are hereby prohibited within the city limits of Glasgow, Kentucky. Section two, cannabis business as defined by KRS two eighteen B point oh one oh, subparagraph three, means any entity licensed under KRS two eighteen B as a cultivator, dispensary, processor, producer, or safety compliance facility. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you have heard first reading of this ordinance prohibiting all cannabis business operations within the city limits of Glasgow. Let's get it up on the floor for discussion. I entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Benel.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Now, the floor is open for discussion on the first reading of this ordinance.
Kevin, could you please come up to the podium? Can you please talk about, we had some training as council members, and then the next day, some other numbers came down that wasn't in our training. Can you tell the public what actually is, in fact, or no? Or do we know?
It's still a pretty fluid situation. I know that the state has reissued some of their capacities with regards to what you can actually get prescribed for. That being, the ingestible kind is primarily the main thing that you're going to be prescribed. The production of the plants, is my understanding, that that's going to be nil to zero. I mean, maybe thirty-seven or three-point-seven-five grams, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Three-point-seven-five grams. So, that was issued basically Thursday. The slides that was given to us by KLC, which was issued by Sam Flynn, who's the executive director of the state medical cannabis program, issued that to us on May twenty-third, and since May twenty-third, those numbers have changed. So, as of late last week, those numbers changed to that, that that I'm telling you about. And I think what Mr. Alexander can also explain, too, is that this ordinance that you're reading does not prohibit an individual from partaking, is simple, simply the prohibiting the selling and growing of it. We, as the staff and the planning commission, will do whatever the, you know, the council decides for us to do. If you do opt-in, we'll have to create some ordinances that go into effect where this is going to be permitted at. There needs to be some understanding that, to the community, that the application and the fees, we're talking about sixteen total cultivators, that means growers, for the entire state, one hundred and twenty counties, so about fourteen percent, fifteen percent of the entire state is going to be issued those. Ten processors for the entire state, and then forty-eight dispensaries, and we are a nine-county region, there are eleven regions. So, four total dispensary sellers could be issued that for our region. Now, Barron County, Glasgow, Cave City, Park City is not getting issued a license. That individual who applies to the state is getting issued a license. And they, before they can apply to the state, has to put down an address of where they, where the dispensary or the cultivator or the processor will be located. And at that time, a randomized lottery drawing will take place to notify those individuals that were drawn. There is no guarantee that you will get one, an individual will locate one here. There's no guarantee of that. But I just want to reiterate that this does not prohibit an individual from being able to partake in it if they have the additional card that's issued by the state in order to even receive it. So, they have to go to a doctor, psychiatrist, or whoever that can issue this, then apply it to the state, and then, they can then purchase that, anywhere in the state that will allow the, but you have to do it in your own home.
So, Kevin, if I'm understanding this correctly, if the City of Glasgow, as a council, if we opted out to prohibit this, people can still get their cannabis?
That's correct.
If they have a card?
Yes, that's correct.
In Glasgow?
Yes. Uh, no, no.
Not purchase it in Glasgow, but say Warren County?
Yeah.
Cave City.
You cannot, you cannot use this substance anywhere outside of your residence. You can purchase it anywhere in the state of Kentucky that is allowed to be purchased from, but you have to transport that from the place that you purchase it to your residence, okay? One other thing, too, that's very important to note, if you opt out, you can always opt in at any moment. If, and I will make this statement, if you put this on a ballot and it gets voted down, you have a three-year waiting period, no matter what, you can't bring it back up for three years. You, even you as the legislative body, cannot bring it up if it is put on the ballot and it is voted down. So, you can always opt in after January, but once you opt in, you can never opt out. So, the reason why this is brought to you in June is because July one, the licensing applications will be accepted at the state level from a period of July one to August thirty-first, and that's for growers and sellers. That is not for the public users, okay?
So, just so we understand this correctly, there will be twelve in the state of Kentucky, correct?
Sixteen total.
Sixteen, sorry.
Sixteen total cultivators, ten processors.
And our region will have?
Four total dispensaries, which is sellers.
And we are voting on Glasgow opting in or opting out on a dispensary, correct?
On all of it, the entire growing, processing, and selling. Anybody can still buy it in the state of Kentucky and utilize it in their home.
Kevin, seems like we're moving awful fast on this, and fact of the matter is, things are changing daily, it sounds to me like. Also, there, at the federal level, there's some things going on about changing it from Schedule One to Schedule Three, which brings in a whole new situation with pharmacy and pharmacies. So, just seems like we need to take a deep breath and back up a little bit.
I just want to make the statement, we're here just as your staff. We're going to do whatever. I'm not advocating for or against, I'm just making the statement that your ordinance is to opt out for the commercial side of everything, growing and selling it. You do not get the fees from that. The state fees that will be issued to these, you will not receive those.
Would you, in your department, or Nick, from his department, have an estimate of what this would cost us to administer this program if we opted in?
Nick would have, Mr. Hurt would have to answer that, and I'm not sure that KLC has even given us a number that we can even go off of, but he could probably verify that if he needs to. There is one other state statute, all of sales, you know, it has to be with, beyond a thousand feet of a school property or daycare, and that's property to property. That's, it's not as, you know, generalized circle, that's property line, property line.
Good discussion. Let's keep it going. Other questions? This is important discussion.
I would like, if Nick could, to address the cost involved administering this, if we opt into it, and then, not only cost, you know, that we've got manpower and we've got other costs involved in it, you know, the time we've got into it, I think you would have annual expenditures you'd have to do, and are there inspections involved in it, and ongoing costs, and so?
I'm sure there would be. Honestly, we don't have a lot of information about the inspections or anything. The state is going to handle a lot of it, but as far as from a revenue standpoint, we do know this, it will not be like ABC where you can get regulatory fees. Basically, this will be run just like any other business. They'll have a business license for fifty dollars, they'll have a net profit. If they have payroll, they'll have payroll. That's it. There's nothing as far as, I've not gotten any information as far as I will have to go and inspect. I will do a normal business inspection, but that would be it. I'm sure there will be some kind of policing administering going on, but I don't have any, any information on that.
Nick, I don't know who needs to answer this, you or Kevin, but is it safe to say that if this passes, that we opt in? The wording's got me all hoodwinked with the prohibiting and everything, but if this, if we opt in, that there's a chance, because this is a lottery, that Glasgow wouldn't even be pulled with?
There's a good chance.
If I'm not mistaken.
There's a chance that no one in Barron County, Glasgow, would get it, even if everybody opted in. One other thing, okay, so, let's, let's make this statement once again. Just because Glasgow opts in doesn't mean Glasgow's getting one. An individual has to do it, a private business entity, nonprofit, whoever, they are the ones that are going to be locating here. We, as the city or the county, we have no say or pull on any of that stuff. So, an individual, if you opt in, an individual has ability to potentially get drawn from the state and locate his business in your town. And we're talking one, not multiples.
Are you aware of anyone showing interest?
There's been a couple of individuals to contact our office, just wanting to know what rules are, and I send them to the kentuckymedcan.gov. That's the state website for medicinal cannabis.
Thank you. I'll be quiet now.
It's fine.
It's good conversation. Sir?
I was just going to kind of circle back and summarize. Mr. Mied and Mr. Hurt did a great job of explaining it, but I think it really boils down to this, and I'll kind of, I'll give you my legal opinion, and then you all can take it for what it's worth. But essentially, under this new law, cities or counties have three decisions to make. Are we going to allow it? And if so, how are we going to zone it and regulate it? Are we going to prohibit all of the business activity, the cultivator, the dispensary, the processor, the producer, the safety compliance facility? Or three, are we going to pass a resolution and say, we're not going to make a decision, we're going to let the citizens decide it? And also, even if the council passes an ordinance prohibiting it, the statute says that the citizens can take it, take it to ballot if they want to, okay? So, that's the basic framework. My opinion for Glasgow is that you all have heard a lot of this stuff, and it is all up in the air. As Councilman Norris said, there's a lot of things fluctuating. My opinion is, for the safest method for going forward, if you opt out and prohibit now, you can always get back in if things turn out to be great for cities. If you jump the gun and you opt in and allow it now, then you're stuck with it. So, to me, the safest prudent route for anything as game-changing as this is statewide, to me, would be to prohibit it and then see how it goes. Regulations are going to change up and down, and then you can, you're not out of the game that way, but if you opt in, you're in the game regardless of how it turns out. So, that, take that for what it's worth, but that, to me, that, that's really the decision that needs to be made.
Rich, I promise, I'm not trying to be confrontational or anything, but can you explain to me what you meant by great for the cities?
Well, if I was...
Because isn't this about the person getting it?
No, no.
Like, what is it, what do you mean, great for the cities?
Okay, so, again, going back to that distinction, this, what you're considering to not has no impact whatsoever on the individual user of the cannabis. So, if I was, if I was a resident of the City of Glasgow, I went to my doctor, they said that I needed cannabis for a medical reason, I could go to Warren County if they adopted it, I could go to Hark County if they adopted it, I could go to Taylor County, I could get the cannabis. It's legal, and it would be legal for me to possess it in the City of Glasgow. All this does... All this does, or deals with, are we going to allow the cannabis business right now to operate in the city limits of Glasgow? We're gonna allow, I should say, the potential, because it really, there's not a guarantee that it would ever happen in Glasgow anyway. So it does not affect the end user and the person that needs it for their health concerns. This, the decision you all are making tonight, or at some point, is whether or not the city is going to allow the cannabis business to operate within the limits of Glasgow. That makes sense?
Rich, not much said on the police end of it. If they did have a facility where you could buy it in Bowling Green, then you've got to do what with it from there, that point, if you're coming back to Glasgow with it? You know, what's a police effort there, and the unfundiness of it, and that's a big part too.
Yeah.
We haven't talked about that.
Yep.
Hold your mic up there, Marlon. Grab your mic. Yeah.
A citizen of Glasgow can get a petition started?
Yes, sir.
Uh huh. Would it be city, the city only, or could the county and the city both vote?
Well, that's, there's some timing issues there too. If, and I don't know, I'm not speaking for the, obviously for the fiscal court, but if, let's say the, say we didn't take any action, and the fiscal court said, yes, we're gonna, going to allow the cannabis operations to take place in Bering County, that means that it would be able to take place in Glasgow too, unless and until the city-
Because the county all the rules-
Right, unless Glasgow makes the decision. But yeah, the, it does say, if the local government legislative body prohibits cannabis business operations through the passage of an ordinance, a public question that is initiated by petition and that proposes allowing it may be authorized. So if the citizens of Glasgow don't like whatever decision the council made, then they have the ability to file that petition.
Rich, I'd like to ask you a couple of things. The first thing is, we've talked about that we could wait and see how other cities or counties in our region go about this. With that being said, Kevin pointed out earlier that there's only going to be four that's given out in our region of nine counties.
Right.
So if we don't jump on this bandwagon and we wait, and there's already four given out, we may be on the outside looking in.
That's true. Yep.
Going to Freddie, talked about there's a lot of unknowns. I mean, yeah, I agree. I've thought long and hard about this, counsel. And there's a lot of unknowns. There's a lot of unknowns in the budget that we just passed of $30 million. We're banking on the Aquatic Center that we're gonna spend a fortune on. You know, that's why it's called estimated. We don't know. There was a lot of unknowns about the COVID vaccine, me being a healthcare professional, but we all jumped on, or not all, vast majority jumped in on that and took the chance. Years later now, we're realizing what the side effects are. Some people it helped, some people it didn't. Some lives it saved, some people wish they wouldn't have taken it. We keep talking about the revenue. What is it gonna cost? I mean, what'd the COVID vaccine cost? If it's gonna help someone, and they're gonna be able to obtain it anyway, so whether they go to Monroe, live in Monroe County and have to drive to Bowling Green to get it, you're supposed to do it at your home, and you're supposed to go the speed limit too, but we don't always do that. So my fear is, if we don't do this, and we have a lot of people on the road, and they go get their edibles, speaking of that, we have edibles here, we have several businesses that sell cannabis and other things that are in a lower volume than this is gonna be. So I don't know if we prohibit this, if it's gonna affect the businesses already around here that sells gummies, or other products that have a small amount of THC that will still affect your vision or thinking or whatnot. But that's one, I mean, I think we need to make the right choice, and always waiting to see how it affects somebody else isn't the right thing, guys. WKU wanted to come to Glasgow years ago, we told them, we'll just wait. Saw what that did. We waited on alcohol sales, had to have K-City jump on board before we decided, we'll do it. We saw what happened with them, we saw the restaurants that they brought in, we've brought in some since then. But at the end of the day, the people in Frankfurt have already voted for this, so it's gonna happen. I just have a fear of, if we don't do it and have it five minutes down the road for someone that's in a lot of pain, and they have to travel back and forth, are they gonna be using that on the way back home from Bowling Green to Monroe County, or to Temple Hill, or to Glasgow? Because they're gonna be able to do it anyway. You can thank your people in Frankfurt for passing that through, whether you agree or not, it's a done deal. It's gonna happen. So I just, you know, wanna make the right decision. Of course, things are gonna change. You know, like Kevin said, some things were changing in the last two or three days as far as the amounts. I think it started off at four ounces a month, and now it's down to 37 grams, I thought, but maybe today I heard you say 3.7 grams, which is very, very little as far as volume. But, you know, it's a risk that you can either get on board and, you know, you don't have to really look at as far as a revenue. Of course, we all know it's gonna bring revenue in. I mean, that, whether it's a small amount, a big amount, but your grandma that's in the nursing home, if she gets this, how's she gonna be able to get to Bowling Green and get it? You know? Because if Bowling Green passes it and we don't, and she gets a card from somebody, because there will be somebody that writes a prescription for that, whether they're employed now, you know, or, you know, somebody comes in here and writes that, that's gonna happen. So how's she gonna get that? If she's in a nursing home and doesn't have family? So it's just something to consider. It's more than just a revenue. You know, we're talking about people's health, and I talked to someone today whose dad is on medical marijuana, and he lives in New York, and she did tell me that if that wasn't available, she believes her dad would have committed suicide already by now. Now, obviously, we're not voting whether that's gonna happen or not, because again, that's already passed, we're just voting if it's gonna be convenient for our citizens to obtain, so we really need to think about this.
All right. Kevin, you covered a lot of things, and we understand it better, but you didn't say anything about how that would enter the school and how it'd be administered at school. Would you share with us a little bit about that?
I mean, I don't care to share it. That is, the schools, let's see here. It says that House Bill 829 requires each local board of education, each board of directors of a public charter school, and each governing body of certified private schools to develop policies for the use of medical cannabis on school grounds. And it says, schools may either prohibit the use of medical cannabis on school property or permit the use of medicinal cannabis on school property by a pupil who is registered, who is a registered qualified patient as deemed necessary by that parent or legal guardian. So the schools can prohibit it or permit it, they just, they have to make a decision as well before January 1. A minor can get a medical card through the state. Schools have to make some kind of decision.
Do they have to have an RN to administer that, or what?
That information is not available yet, so there are some, I know there's some nurses at schools that maybe feel a little apprehensive about being able to do that, so, but that's obviously not our concern here.
Yeah, again, Freddie, that's gonna happen regardless, whether we have it here or not. If they get the prescription and they go to Bowling Green, or Taylor County, or Elizabeth Town, and they bring it back, then, you know, Glasgow's gonna, either they're gonna say whether they'll allow it or not, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's one more thing that comes down to the local jurisdiction. In other words, each individual government's gonna have to decide, each individual school district's gonna have to decide, so they're putting a whole lot on the locality, which is, and a real short timeframe to do it in.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I gotta read my statement, because I got a lot to say.
Okay, Joe, jump in there.
I'll try to read fast and go through this.
Okay, Joe.
As many of you know, I've campaigned in support of him, medical marijuana and recreational marijuana across the state. I've spoken to multiple subcommittees about the potential to help some with their medical issues. Also have spoken at a national level about the impact it can have on agriculture, businesses, and tax revenue. Most counties in our state have lived or still live with alcohol limitations for almost a century. I asked our police chief to compile the numbers of incidents for the time period since we went wet in comparison to the same time period before we went wet, and his numbers showed little to no increase in incidents, and that could be due to the number of folks he had working, ability to work, but it was less possibly due to, in fact, we were no longer driving to Bowling Green to acquire our products. Kentucky has imposed the strictest medical marijuana system in the country, stringent and limited licensing system for cultivation, processing, and the sale of cannabis products, and also to include a robust inspection system to look at the other aspects of it. Yes, we can opt out. With a medical card, you can still participate in your home, but why inconvenience local citizens would have to go to another city or county for their medicine? I personally think it's better to opt in than to opt out. The way Kentucky's medical cannabis system is set up, there's no guarantee any local business will receive a license, even if the city opts in, and that's for cultivation, processing, and/or the sale of it. We don't know for certain if anyone would get a license, but we do know that if we don't opt in, then, hey, with a limited number of licenses, there's a potential, there won't be any licenses left. So far as that's concerned, I personally think we need to opt in.
All right, Joe. Thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
You really can't participate, Patrick, because you're not, because you're on Zoom and you're not, you didn't let us know in time where we could get you on the agenda on Zoom, okay?
Mayor Ross, I would just like, I'm sorry, just to make a few comments. A lot of discussion on this topic, and, you know, my main concern with this is that we don't have a process in place right now. The cost to administer this program, from staffing, from the paperwork, just the general management of a system that we don't know. You know, this came to us from Frankfurt, and here it is, you can do it, and we got certain parameters set up, yet we hear that that's still a moving target on parts of that. So by opting out, it gives us an opportunity to understand more of what is gonna happen down the road, and if we miss it, I would dare say it'll come back around again, because we need time to consider this. We need time to look at how it's gonna impact the citizens of this community, how it's gonna impact our staff, how it's gonna impact our police, how it's gonna impact our licensing, how it's gonna impact planning and zoning, how it's gonna impact a lot of different areas in our community. And I don't think we're at a point right now to blanket say, we need to opt in on this and get going with it. I don't see that. We need to come back, and we need to opt out, and we need to wait and see, and, Councilman Mayor, to your comment, there's a lot of things that are unknown, but when we pass a budget, we have history of a budget, how a budget has worked over the years, because we have experience in that, how a budget works, how we have inflows and outflows of dollars, but this, we don't know. There are so many unknowns on this, and if we opt in, we can't opt back out, and if we get in a mess or get sideways with it, then we create a system that we can't live with, that we cannot manage, and we put a burden on people and on systems. And I don't wanna overload our systems right now. By opting out, we can wait, we can see, we can get educated on this process, we can see how other communities handle it, let's be better at it, let's be prudent at it. That's all I ask this body is, is to be prudent with the decision here. If people are being prescribed it today, they're being prescribed it today in the seat of Glasgow, where are they getting it from? Are they being administered it by a prescription? If they're getting it, they're getting it. If they're, if they're not getting it, will this change them getting it or not getting it? I don't think so at this point. I don't think it will. But what, we're not ready. We are not ready. We were ready to pass a budget just a few minutes ago with excess spending over revenue because we had spent years of planning for this point in time, and we had, we were prudent, and we were good stewards of dollars then to do what we did in a budget. When it comes to this, we need to think more about it, look at it, study it, and I don't wanna come over here and put a burden on Nick, or Kevin, or the police department, or the system in general, when we don't have to. We don't have to do this. We can opt out and wait, and we still have choices. If we opt in, we take away choices. I don't want us to take away a choice. I'd rather be open to choices.
I feel like if we don't do it, we're taking a choice away from someone that could utilize this to benefit their health. And on the flip side, what skin, you know, it's gonna, it's not like that we as a council or a government body are gonna set up the producing, the cultivating, we're not gonna have a dispensary. That's gonna be left up to somebody willing to take the chance from the outside, and I think that, you know, the state has already, I'm sure, you know, before they passed this, I'm sure they've looked at other states that's already passed it, I'm sure they've gone through the pros and cons. Joe said that he's been an advocate for years, so it's not like, just because we're just hearing about this over the last couple of weeks, somebody else has already done the footwork. Now, do we, you know, do we wanna do the legwork and take a chance, or do we wanna make it a hardship?
Sure. Well, I look at it as, a lot of things happen in Frankfurt that come down to us that are mandated to us, and this is one that we have a choice in making. And I think we need to make a choice to opt out, because we need time to look at this and to study this more to know how it's going to work. We do not know that today. We have no ordinance, we have no licensing process, we have no planning and zoning, we have none of that right now. So why are we rushing into it? I just don't understand. A choice is being taken away from us, and to me, when you take a choice, then you're, you've not made the best decision.
But don't we have six months to get everything in line before it actually happens? Before someone puts, you know, starts it? I mean, six months is a long time.
Excuse me?
When the COVID vaccine came out, and boom, we all jumped on and took a shot and didn't even have a, we were just hoping that they were telling us the truth, and so we said, well, we're gonna believe them, we're gonna take the choice.
If I may, I had a conversation with somebody today that brought up an analogy that has kind of stuck with me all day, is we're entering into, potentially entering into an agreement for the citizens in this community, and there are a set of rules, and so many times today, people say, well, I don't know about that, I don't know about that yet. Well, we're agreeing to 10 rules, but only five of them have been written. We have no idea what the other restrict- to 10 rules, but only five of them have been written. We have no idea what the other restrictions, qualifications, fallbacks on the city are gonna be. But if we opt in tonight, we're saying, okay, whatever else you add to this list, we're gonna agree to it. I'm with Terry in that there's lots of things you wanna be in the, the front run for. I'm just not sure this is one of them. I think we need to see what all the rules are gonna be before we, we sign our community up for this.
All right.
Mayor, I think everybody's had a chance to speak. If not, call a question.
Um, okay, one thing I wanna say, in doing that, though, I have one more question for Kevin. But I also wanna say that, uh, um, I also wanna say that there's been a whole lot of work done on this. Kevin spent all kinds of time in Frankfurt. Nick spent all types of time at seminars. They brought all of the slides back from their training. And every council member here spent their own time hearing this training so that they would know how to respond to this and to be able to speak intelligently about this when we get up here tonight. So I wanna thank everybody for the amount of time they've invested to put a highlight on what the importance of this is. My question to you is, have there been any communities that have been guaranteed licenses?
Only Louisville and Lexington. Those are the two entities that will be guaranteed, uh, a minimum of four dispensaries.
Is that out of the 16?
Now, the dispensaries, there's 48 total dispensaries. There's 16 cultivators and growers and processors. The 48 dispensaries, four will be given to Louisville, four will be given to Lexington, and the other 40 will be doled out to those, to those regions as the lottery system is set up. Uh, one thing to note, if you, if you opt out and then later you opt in, say you opt in in April of next year, um, an individual who may have one in a different county of the state can relocate here. You've opted in. There will, as, as Mr. Trigg has said, there's not gonna be more license issued for, for that fiscal year or that, that calendar year. Um, however, that doesn't keep an individual from relocating his or her business to a different area that, that would opt in at a later time.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that. All right.
So Kevin, before you go, um, what about the places that we have already now, the sale gummies at these local places that I'd mentioned earlier? Will they be closed then?
There's no, I haven't come across, and I don't know if the chief can speak to it, but maybe he can. Uh, but I haven't come across any legislation yet that's maybe referenced that, uh, from my end of it. Now, the chief might have some, uh, something else to add to that.
Under the new House Bill 142 and the subsequent bill that passed, it now gives local law enforcement the ability to deal with those vape shops, to deal with those. Uh, we are currently trying to get in place where we are going to have, uh, if in fact somebody brings us something they thinks over the limit, we have to pay for, uh, the, the study, the chemistry to find out the determining how much THC is in there. So yes, we now have that ability to go in. But Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, the dispensary can only sell and dispense the medical marijuana. They can't sell or dispense anything else?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I know, I know Councilmember Marion called the question, but can we still ask questions?
Well, uh, he called the question, but if you wanna continue the debate, that's fine.
Can you vo- can you avoid that, please?
Voided.
You can't void it?
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's keep going, keep going. It's fine.
Okay. Um, I guess this would be to you, Kevin. Um, if, if we opt in, nothing takes place, and this doesn't go into effect until January 1 of '25, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So if we opt in tonight, I know we have to have a second reading, but let's say, let's say by July the 1st, '24, we're opting in. We're, we've opted in. Does people, does people have to wait to do their lottery license till the '25, or does it start then?
The license application is open July 1 to August 31, regardless...
Of this year?
Of this year, regardless of communities in or out. So an individual, if you do not make a decision by, by June 30th, that's fine. But if an individual puts down an address that's inside your city limits, and then you wait till October or November and you opt out, and that individual was chosen, they have to, by law, then relocate and put a new address to a pro- uh, uh, an entity or, or a place in Kentucky that does allow for it. You may have some, some issues when it comes to that if an individual was misled that you were gonna be in and then you were out. Uh, you know, because they put down on their application a place in Glasgow because we never made a decision or we haven't made a decision yet. So if the application process for, for selling it or growing it must have an address. And then you've got some other things that's gotta go with that, but the main thing is the address. The license fee and the, the letter of credit that you have to submit with that has gotta be in place as well. But you don't technically have to make a decision until December. And even then, if you don't make a decision, you're automatically in. However, you know, the licensing applications is from July 1 to August 31. So it kinda puts the pressure on you all to have some sort of idea of, give your, your constituents or the citizens some idea of what you're doing.
So this is, this is really, really serious when it comes to the person wanting a license because they could lose all of that money, correct, if they wouldn't draw?
That's my understanding. Now, now, if they get chosen, if they get chosen or drawn, uh, and, and you as a group or, uh, you opt out at a later date in this year, they still have the ability, they get to keep their license, okay, that they were awarded. They just have to relocate to a, to a, a place in Kentucky that allows for it. They are not, their, their license is not being taken away.
Thank you. I, I understand now.
Okay.
All right, good discussion. Uh, I will call the question unless somebody has something else they would like to bring up. All right? All in favor of passing the first reading of this ordinance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I believe we're gonna do a voice vote on this one. Mona?
Yes.
Yes.
The wording's got me messed up. You have to help me on this. If I'm prohibiting, then I'm a no, right?
A, a yes, a yes vote would prohibit the sale of it.
Can we, can we, can you just tell me opting in and opting out? Can I just say that?
A yes vote would be prohibiting the sale of it, means it won't be happening. No vote means that you're okay with the dispensing, so...
I'm a no vote.
You get that?
Lowry?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
No.
Okay, and so what's the final total?
One, two, three no's and...
Uh, three, okay. Five, uh, five to three. The, uh, ordinance does not pass on first read. The ordinance does pa- I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm confused too after being thinking, staring at this paper so long. So, uh, we will move, move forward after completing this particular task, uh, into another ordinance regarding the changing of the size of our corporate limits.
This is an ordinance, uh, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Glasgow property containing 5.53 acres located at 2420 New Bowling Green Road in Barron County, owned by Clarence and Connie Francis, and establishing a B3 zoning classification. And I'll just say this real quick before I read the ordinance. In Kentucky, if the, if the property owners who consent to the property being annexed sign a written consent, you can do the annexation and the zoning at the same time. So that, that's what this ordinance does. Whereas pursuant to KRS 81A412, Clarence and Connie Francis, husband and wife, are owners of 5.53 acres more or less, located at 2420 New Bowling Green Road in Barron County. The PVA parcel number, uh, is included in this ordinance. And they have provided their written consent to the annexation into the corporate limits of the City of Glasgow as shown by the document attached as Exhibit A. Whereas the property being annexed is depicted on the drawing attached as Exhibit B1, and the legal description for the subject property being annexed is attached as Exhibit B2 and incorporated herein by reference. Whereas pursuant to KRS 81A.412, when all of the property owners being annexed consent in writing, annexation may be streamlined without the requirements of an annexation notification ordinance, other notification requirements, and the typical waiting period of 60 days prior to the enactment of a final annexation ordinance. And further, the city may enact a single ordinance annexing, annexing and zoning the subject property if the city has elected to establish the zoning pursuant to KRS 100.209 prior to the completion of the annexation, which is the in, the case in this instance. Whereas on April 15 of this year pursuant to KRS 100209, the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a trial-type due process public hearing for the purpose of adopting a comprehensive plan amendment and making a recommendation as to the zoning or other land use reg- regulations which will be effective for the property upon its annexation. This resulted in the unanimous recommendation by the commission that a B3 zoning classification be established for the property as shown on Exhibit C attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Copies and findings of the recommend, copies of the findings and recommendations of the Joint City-County Planning Commission have been forwarded to the council, which are hereby adopted by the council and attached as Exhibit D to this ordinance. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section 1, that there is hereby annexed into the corporate limits to the City of Glasgow pursuant to KRS 81A420, all of that parcel of land in Barron County, Kentucky, owned by Clarence and Connie Francis, husband and wife, which contains 5.53 acres more or less and located at 2420 New Bowling Green Road. Again, the drawing and legal description are attached as Exhibits B1 and B2. Section 2, that the property annexed hereby shall be zoned B3 classification, which is the Highway Service Business District, as shown on Exhibit C attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Section 3, all future development of the property annex shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
You've heard the first reading of the ordinance annexing this property into the city limits. I will entertain a motion that we approve first reading of this ordinance.
Motion, Banal.
Second.
Okay, second from, uh, Councilman Lowry. Any discussion? All right, then I will call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye. I'm sorry, hold on.
The annexation says, uh, I want to, but over where it is, consent to annex.
There's...
Hold, hold, sit.
We're fixing to get to that other one.
Yep.
We're fixing to get to the second one, right? Just in a second, okay. All right. It, it gets confusing, Marla. So anyway, but I, but I'm glad that you stopped me because I want you to be clear on what we're voting on. We're voting on the first reading of this ordinance annexing into the corporate limits. This is a property, uh, out on New Bowling Green Road. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Rich, let's go to this other piece of property.
Yes, Mayor, this is a, a similar ordinance. Uh, this is property owned by Universal Estates LLC, the owner of 0.608 acres more or less. This is located near the, the prior annexation that we talked about, 2384 New Bowling Green Road. Um, and the provide, the property owner, Universal Estates, has provided its written consent to the annexation as well, attached as Exhibit A. Whereas the subject property being annexed is depicted on the drawing attached as Exhibit B, the legal description is attached as Exhibit B2. Whereas pursuant to KRS 81A.412, when all of the property owners are, uh, of the property being annexed consent in writing, annexation may be streamlined without the requirements of an annexation notification ordinance, other notification requirements, and the waiting period of 60 days prior to enacting the final annexation ordinance. And further, the city may enact a single ordinance annexing and zoning the subject property if the city has elected to establish the zoning pursuant to KRS 100.209 prior to the completion of the annexation, which is the case in this instance. Again, on April 15 of 2024, pursuant to law, the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a trial-type due process hearing for the purpose of adopting the comprehensive plan amendment and making a recommendation to the zoning or other land use regulations which will be effective for the property upon its annexation. This resulted in the unanimous recommendation by the commission that a B3 zoning classification be established for the property as shown on Exhibit C attached here too and incorporated by reference. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission have been forwarded to the council, which are adopted by the council and attached as Exhibit D. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section 1, there's hereby annexed into the corporate limits of Glasgow pursuant to law, all of that parcel of land in Barron County, Kentucky, owned by Universal Estates LLC, which contains 0.608 acres more or less, located at 2384 New Bowling Green Road. The drawing and legal descriptions are attached as Exhibit B1 and B2. And, uh, I would note that the 0.68 acres more or less owned by Universal Estates is part of the overall 5.3 acres being annexed. Section 2, this property annexed will be zoned B3 classification, which is the Highway Service Business District. Section 3, all future development of the property annexed shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this, this, uh, ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. And Councilmember Neil pointed something out to me on the consent for annexation. Uh, the Francises own a total of nine acres, but part of that had already been annexed into the city. So the PVA shows it as a total of nine acres, but the remaining acreage is what we're annexing. That's, that's where you get the nine, nine acres.
Good catch. All right, so you have had this in your packet, and you've heard the reading, the first reading of this ordinance, uh, annexing this property into the city limits. I would entertain a motion that we approve this ordinance on first reading?
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Any discussion on this? We're clear on what this is, right? Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes. All right, we have a resolution to review. Rich?
Next couple of items, Mayor, are grant resolutions. This, this is a resolution for the city to make application for an energy efficiency and conservation block grant. Be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow that April Russell, grant writer for the city, shall be authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for an energy efficiency and conservation grant in the amount of $750,000, which if received will be used for the construction of a bridge at the landfill. This grant has a cash match obligation of $250,000. Be it further resolved by the City of Glasgow that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary to make application for this grant.
All right, you have heard the resolution that we have read. We've talked about this particular, uh, bridge, talking about the, uh, uh, in, in the budget, uh, proposal. But here we have a grant that will help with this. So I entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Banal.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries.
This second resolution is to make application for a Kentucky Agricultural Development Fund grant. Be it hereby resolved by the city that April Russell, grant writer for the City of Glasgow, is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a grant in the amount of $375,000 administered through the Kentucky Agricultural Development Fund, which if received will be used for the construction of a standalone farmer's market facility. This grant has a cash or in-kind match obligation of $375,000. Be it further resolved by the...
All right, you've heard the resolution, let's bring it up for discussion by, first of all, entertain a motion that we approve it?
Motion, Lowry.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. I am going to, because he has been so patient, Griffin Botts is here, the Director of Sustainable Glasgow, and I just feel like, Griffin, we ought to have you come up here to the microphone very quickly to let everybody know what this particular grant is going to allow to happen. And I, this, this is not the first or second time you've appeared before the council, but we want to, since this is topical, we just want to bring you up here, sir.
Yeah, for sure. Well, thank you for letting me join you. This is certainly a fun one to be my first city councilman.
Yeah, that's right, you can make notes on this.
Yeah, absolutely. But yes, yeah, so I took over for Ms. Johnson back in August, so took over Sustainable Glasgow. We are the 501(c)(3) nonprofit that operates down at the Barrons, so on the square every Saturday morning. And this is a fund, a grant through the Agricultural Development Committee, basically a big pot of money that is left over from tobacco settlement. Obviously, everyone remembers that, a big deal in Kentucky, and it is there for us to take advantage of to build farmers' market infrastructure. So when I took over in August, the number one thing that the vendor said to me was, hey, you know, we're obviously such a powerhouse in agriculture for the state of Kentucky, when are we getting a farmers' market building? We're obviously very thankful to be on the square, folks see, you know, great revenue in Barron County. The vendors that I speak with say that we are their best market, even the ones that go to Bowling Green, that go to Allen County, they make the most revenue direct to consumer here. And so I can only hope that we will and foresee that we will hopefully maybe even double that when they can have a permanent structure that's accessible to, you know, all the citizens off the square over there, so.
That's good discussion. Anybody want to ask Griffin a question before we vote? All right, well, thank you very much, we appreciate you hanging with us, sir. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution passes. All right, now we have a municipal order amending some of our personnel policies.
This is a municipal order amending Order Number 2023-1055, the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. That whereas in contracting with the Kentucky League of Cities, the City of Glasgow has developed a new Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. And whereas changes need to be made from time to time to clarify and update the manual, and whereas it is recommended that the City Council approve the changes listed in Exhibit A. The chapters being updated are 2.10 Medical Examinations, 3.8 Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace Provisions, 3.12 Inclement Weather, 4.1 Employment Types and Classification, 4.15 Travel and Reimbursement, 6.2 Vacation Leave, 6.5 Family Medical Leave Act, 6.6 Pregnancy and Parental Lease, 6.7 Adoption Leave, and 6.8 Critical Incident Leave for Police and Firefighters. Now therefore, the City of Glasgow does hereby order that these changes be made to the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. A copy of those changes are attached as Exhibit A, and they're adopted effective immediately, so ordered by the Glasgow City Council today's date.
You've heard the municipal order, I entertain a motion that we approve it?
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Witcher. Okay, any discussion on this municipal order? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Some things that I want you to make a note of in your packet, there are some notifications of some appointments that are gonna be coming up for reappointment or new appointments after the end of the month. And also in the packet, there are some executive orders that have been signed, and as a matter of record, you're certainly encouraged to look at those to make sure of what these changes like in standard operating procedure at the police department and a few other things like that. City Hall is gonna be closed on the 19th of June, that is the celebration of the Juneteenth Freedom Day, that is a Wednesday, June 19, City Hall will be closed. Our next meeting will be on the 24th of June, right here in these chambers. And I don't think I see anything else on this agenda other than to entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion, Benel.
Second, Marion.
Okay, all right, we, I believe we'll vote, but I think it's unanimous. All right, thank y'all very much for your time and your attention, good meeting.